My computer says 72. That's late. Yes, I'm. All right, we are online. Would you like to call an order for the November 24th, 2020 Columbia Borough Council regular meeting? Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Zink?
Here.
Councilperson Kaufman?
Here.
Councilperson Williams? Here. Councilperson Fitzgerald?
Here.
Councilperson Stevens?
Here.
Councilperson Littner?
Here.
Councilperson McGarrett?
Here.
Mayor Lutz?
Here.
All right, is no one from the ministerium, please rise for a moment of silent reflection. Mayor, would you like to lead us in a pledge, please?
Sure. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of executive and information sessions. On November 24th, 2020 at 6:30, council held an information session to receive information on the items from the manager and solicitor. Does anyone have any additions, deletions, or reorganization of the agenda? I do not. No?
Other than a statement I want to share from the EMC, the Republic Safety, that needs to be added to the agenda?
No, because that could just be under the Public Safety part. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as published?
Should I move?
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, a second by councilperson McGarrett, to approve the agenda as published, all in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Citizen comment? All right. There is a five-minute time limit per person. First one we have is Jamie. No?
No.
No? I didn't see the signup sheet, so I was just linking it. That's okay.
I love Warren.
And Susan, did you want to know? All right, cool. We're just kind of linking it. All right, minutes for approval. Could I have a motion to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes from November 5th, 2020?
Should I move?
And a second?
Second.
A motion by councilperson Kaufman, a second by councilperson Littner, to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for November 5th, 2020, all in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Could I have a motion to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for November 10th, 2020?
Should I move?
And a second?
Should I move?
I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, a second by councilperson Stevens, to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for November 10th, 2020, all in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? There are no presentations, so Mayor Lutz?
Just two comments, President. First one is concerning this Thanksgiving holiday coming up. I urge all, everyone, Columbia residents, anybody else listening to this, to this meeting tonight, to exercise caution and use some thought during this Thanksgiving holiday. We're not out of the woods yet, there has been an uptick, and I want everybody to stay safe. I know it's been a trying year, the holidays are coming upon us, but we got to think about this. All indications are that this could be a big uptick, depend upon what folks do over this holiday weekend. So, you know, hopefully we can prove the experts wrong and not have that uptick. The other thing is, a little near and dear to me, Saturday will begin the deer season, and a lot of folks will be going into the woods hunting. Please exercise caution in the woods, be safe. If you're lucky enough to harvest a deer, don't be a hero if you're getting up in age and try to get it out yourself. Try to find someone to give you a hand. We don't need anybody having heart attacks in the midst of this pandemic as along with it. So be safe this weekend and have a happy holiday.
Excellent.
Thank you. All right. All business. Consider ordinance 922, 2020. This is amending the Code of Codes. Could I have a motion to approve this?
Should I move?
And a second?
Should I move?
I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman and a second by councilperson Stevens to approve amending, or approve ordinance 922, 2020. And we also need to authorize staff to have the approved ordinance codified. This is just a note, this is the one that takes the fees for quick tickets and such out of the code itself and refers everything back to the fee schedule.
And the only thing it does is establishes our appeals committee. So any code enforcement appeals will now be done by a committee. And the way we wrote that is two board members and the Borough Manager would be on that committee.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments on this?
I do have a question for Mark. When we talked about this last meeting, I asked about a fee schedule. Are you going to be able to have a fee schedule available for us to put it on before January?
So you did ask me that last time. We can do it in December, we have it mostly together. I think we can get it together in December so that it goes in place January 1st. So we can schedule that for the last meeting in December.
I get you.
Correct. Anyone else? And just as a note, we will be having another one of these ordinances, sort of like this, to update other sections of the code. Because as I was reviewing it, I found there are multiple places, not just here, that refer to an actual dollar amount, and that's generally for different fines for things. And it's all throughout the code. So we're going to do one ordinance that's going to amend all of those, but I will have that hopefully by the next meeting.
Is this corrected, or is that supposed to be that way?
What?
Language, should that be language, or is that a new word that I don't know? Because maybe it is.
Where are you standing?
On 1922, the ordinance itself, in the first paragraph there.
Oh, yeah, language.
Linguage.
It's a Dutch word?
That might be. Should it be language? Looks like a different spelling.
Yes, language.
Mayor first paragraf.
Yeah. It's just a misspelling. Dang it, I didn't really pick them out, too.
Well, there's one in 923, but we didn't get there yet.
Oh, I see it all, yeah.
You see that one?
Yeah. Okay, we'll amend that in the ordinance.
Not a problem with that, question. I'm reading this, and then I heard what you, I think I understood what you were saying. This ordinance is going to add certain fees that are contained in article, in chapter 1, onto the fee schedule. And then later on, you're going to add more onto the fee schedule?
Yeah. Like, for example, you want an example of what I mean? Like, in, right now, in the, in the code, in the code section related to, like, false firearms, it has a specific dollar amount for the false firearms. We're going to pull that out and put that on the fee schedule as well.
Yeah, okay. And so I'm understanding what you're saying. Here's my, here's my question. Couldn't this, couldn't an ordinance, and this is for you, Evan, couldn't an ordinance be crafted that says all found in the Borough Code, the Columbia Borough Code, will be placed into the fee schedule? And then we don't pay for one ordinance and then turn around a couple of months, we're going to pay for another ordinance?
That would be, that would be tough, because you've actually got to amend these ordinances, right? You've got to amend the codification in each place.
Okay, okay.
What is, the problem that we had with this one is that when, when we went to the DJ on this issue, the ordinance only has a fine of $25 in it. The fee resolution had been made to, had been amended up to $500, I believe, for this fine.
Yes.
And so that contradiction is why you pull everything out and put it in the fee schedule. But you actually have got to amend each section to take that out and do kind of what we did here, which says, instead of a dollar amount as published in the fee resolution.
Okay, yeah, okay, I understand. I just wanted to check if we could do a carte blanche and save ourselves a couple of thousand dollars.
I've tried to do that in the past, and every attorney, literally every attorney I talk to, they're like, no. You got to go, because you're amending multiple articles and chapters and sections of the code, you got to do it line by line. Now, it's a very long, it'll be a long ordinance, per se, to amend all these. But as long as we stay on a single topic and not try to jump things around, you can jump chapters and sections, one ordinance to do all of them.
Yeah.
That, that's fine. I just had, I had to ask that question because I know we're trying to save every buck we can.
Yeah.
And, you know, so you try.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I feel real good in the fact that you all looked at this already. Okay? So thank you.
Yep.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments or concerns? All right, I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, and a second by councilperson Stevens to approve ordinance 922, 2020.
With the correction?
With the correction in the first paragraph of the word language. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Next, could I have a motion to approve ordinance 923-2020 concerning the civil service regulations?
Should I move?
And a second?
Second.
A motion by councilperson Kaufman, a second by councilperson Littner, to approve ordinance, excuse me, 923-2020. You said there was a.
The word borough is spelled wrong in the first paragraph. The second borough, because first it's borough, then it's.
The Borough Council of the Borough.
Second.
Got it. Thank you.
And I'm embarrassed, because I don't really pick up on that stuff.
It's a tough one. When you're missing one letter, that's a tough type of word to find.
Yep. Does anyone else have any other questions or concerns on this? I do have one question.
Yep.
Only because, I mean, I saw it in there, and I thought I understood, and then when I got asked by the reporter, it made me second guess myself. This, and I'm trying to find the section. The section on political activities while in uniform. That was, the correction there was just to clear up the language, correct?
Correct. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There was no other reason for that. I mean, I didn't think so. And when I read through it, it appeared to me that it was just clarifying the language to bring it up to a more current way of speaking, so to speak?
Yes, yeah, that doesn't add anything else to it.
Anyone else have any other questions, concerns, or comments on this one? All right, I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman and a second by councilperson Littner to approve ordinance 923-2020 concerning civil service regulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? New business. Could I have a motion to consider approval to proceed with collection of preliminary information regarding the options of debt refinancing instruments which are available to the Borough?
Should I move?
And a second?
Second.
A motion by councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by councilperson Stevens to consider approval to proceed with the collection of preliminary information regarding the options of debt refinancing instruments which are available to the Borough. Kyle, would you like to lay in on this?
Quite simply, we're just, we're just following council, finance advisor, event, and looking at underwriters as well. Asking for quotes for services provided, that information as well as the options of refinance we're going to bring back to you on the 3rd of December. And third?
So we're bringing it back on the 3rd as a special meeting to discuss and approve budget items, and we'll discuss this one as well, as a budget impact. Instead of a workshop on the 1st.
Wait, we have a meeting on the 3rd today?
Mm-hmm. There's a budget meeting on.
Oh, that's the budget meeting.
The budget meeting on the 3rd, yes. We have a workshop on the 1st, but we're trying to avoid any action items on the workshop.
Right, all right. That's cool. Because then hopefully we'll be voting on the 3rd to advertise the budget as well. To get that done as well, so, all right. I have a motion by councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by councilperson Stevens to approve staff to proceed with collection of preliminary information regarding the options of the debt refinancing instruments which are available to the Borough. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to consider the facility use request for the Haunted Lantern Tours October 2021?
Seven.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by councilperson Kaufman to consider the facility use request for the Haunted Lantern Tours October 2021. All right, I don't think we have anyone here representing this. Reading through, add a question. They're looking at all, everything being around the market house. What are, how do we?
Yeah, we double-checked with Kelsey on that one, and she has no issue with it. They are in and around the market house, and then going downstairs into the catacombs that are based on the market house, et cetera. So there's no conflict with the market being open.
But I would say prior to the event, that the parties get together and have a discussion about what they can and what they can't do. Because then, by then, the market house is going to be, hopefully, is going to be occupied. So there's going to be some do's and don'ts. You know, you can't go here, you can't have people here, you can't have people there. There's also going to be some safety precautions going down into the dungeon and out of the dungeon, so. I would ask that we remember that we should have a pre-event meeting, just a short meeting to, with Kelsey and whoever, and say, here's what you can do, here's what you can't do, to keep everybody safe. And so that we don't have complaints coming out of any stand orders or whatever have you over there.
Right. And I noticed they have on here four no parking signs for trolley. That's the trolley that they're running from their company, correct? Or that's, or is that our trolley?
I think it's ours. That's one of the two that's using, recommending use our trolley, make sure.
And there again, Heather, we would need to know their route. So that would probably be a good thing to discuss at that point, too. We can't put, you know, I don't see the route, so we need a copy of their route.
Yep.
So we know where to put the parking signs, where they're going to pick up, drop off, or whatever have you.
Pam Armel and I and the chief are meeting on a regular basis now to try to review and clean up the entire, I know we call it a facilities use request, my term is a special events process, so that it's more than just this form and done. But as the mayor is saying, we are looking at any events over a certain size, having a pre-meeting, calling in, fire EMS police, anyone who's being, would be involved in that, and just have pre-planning meetings for these things. Because in my mind, I want us to be able to have large, successful, special events here in town and bring people in, but we need to do it safely and have it well planned. So we're modifying that system right now.
Because I didn't see anywhere on here where they specifically wanted our trolley in.
Right. And we have time, you know, then to get these details worked out.
So, I mean, should we, should we be approving it if we don't have? There's things, I mean.
You can approve it contingent upon. I'll say, everything, lack of other words, you guys can come up with the words.
Yeah.
Everything being discussed and okay.
The thing you're really approving is the use of public space for an event. We're going to get down to the details of the, how the event operates. Because like the mayor says, I want a full timeline of when things need to be shut down. If we're closing streets for parades or something, I want to know that the time is shut down, the time is going to be opened up, et cetera. So this technically is just approving you guys with your management of the public space, approving and authorizing the use of public space for these events. And you can condition upon, you know, staff meeting and reviewing all the safety protocols and procedures for the event.
Does anyone else have any other questions or comments or concerns? All right, I have a motion by councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by councilperson Kaufman to approve the facility use request for the Haunted Lantern Tour October 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Next, could I have a motion to consider the facility use request for the Hemp Fair May 2021?
Seven.
All right, Pam, I'll put you down for the second, how's that?
That's good.
I have a motion by councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by councilperson Williams. See, is that it? Motion by councilperson Fitzgerald, second by councilperson Williams, to consider the facility use request for the Hemp Fair for May 2021.
Susan?
Yeah, questions?
Susan, tap that, skip it on.
Just start spitting on the mayor, please. Where's the proof seal?
We talked about that earlier.
My first question on this is, we are approving Locust, the 500 block of Locust, correct? We're not approving Locust Street Park? Because that's not us, right? So we're approving Locust Street?
Yeah.
Susan, in reading your background and justification, or Pam, I see you're going to have a letter of approval for old Columbia public grounds.
Yes.
That's for the park, as Heather alluded to. Also from the Gladfeld Foundation for Parking and Gladfeld. So you're going to ferry them back and forth, or you're going to transport people back and forth?
Yes, we had requested the use of the trolley, but at that point, there was some concern about repairs needed. And that's why I would not have a route listed.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Well, you heard our previous discussion, so you're one up on us. But yeah, we need, we'll need to get together for the route, and where your stop, your stop in is going to be around the park. The other suggestion I make to you is contact someone from the Lions Club if you intend to use the gazebo.
We did.
Oh, you did, okay. Okay, I didn't see that down here, and I wanted to remind.
I wasn't sure if I needed to list that or not, so.
Yeah, well, you don't have to list that for us, that's their business. But I didn't want you not asking them.
Right.
And then them saying, hey, you didn't ask. Okay, okay, well, thank you. I think that falls back to what Mark was talking about. We have a pre-event get-together, some folks have a pre-event get-together, obviously with the chief, because we're going to need to know where you're routing, route out, and where you're going to drop people off and pick people up.
Okay. The trolley, are you going to be used?
That's up to council.
Oh, okay.
It is, it is working.
Okay.
It's a matter of driver. So, a driver will be needed and approved, I guess, by, that would have to be in some kind of agreement, I believe.
We're going to have to look on, I don't know what the Borough's done in the past, if they even had a formal lease agreement that was done. But if not, we'll get one together to ensure that they have their own insurance. I mean, we carry insurance on the vehicle as well. But this is a Borough-sponsored event, so that's, as long as we have a secure driver, because this is technically one of our events, if you will. So we'll just make sure that all those things are in place for this event. But going forward, for other groups, if another nonprofit or another organization wants to use that, I want to make sure we have all that in place.
With that, Mark, there was, excuse me, excuse me, Pam, there was some discussion, possibly about the merchants association, or someone wanting to lease it. So then, if that were to happen, then any organization or any group wanting to use the drive would have to go through them.
Possibly, or we write the lease in such a way that
They're included this year.
If it's needed, then the Borough can, you know, lease it out within that timeframe or something. So we've got to work out those details.
I think Pam wants.
Um, yeah. I know.
I have a couple things. I assume that because this is a borough sponsored activity, we can get the, have insurance through the borough policy?
For this one, yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, if any other group does it, then we'll look at it. But this is a borough event, so this is kind of, is a different category.
Okay. All right. So the problem is, if they never work with food trucks, do they need to have some kind of licensing before they can purchase a truck?
They, yes. They have to have an approval by the state to operate as a food truck. They have to have their Safe Serve certification. And we do have a mobile vendor license that's required that anyone who comes in and does transient use or transient vending has to have a permit through that as well.
So do I need to add that to my application?
You don't have to add it to this application. It's just something we'll have to put on our checklist of things to get ready for the event, because that's an outside vendor coming in versus a borough.
Right, but I mean, do I need to send the vendor?
To us.
Applying another form to send it to you? Okay, so I need to give that form to the unit and attach to my vendor's application?
Yes. If you have more than one, we just need one for each one.
Susan, I know last year you were pretty excited about the vendors you had coming in. Is it still good this year?
Yes, I sent out number 30 application.
Good, that's wonderful.
And we actually have people that are coming from out of state. We have at least four people that are coming from out of state. And one of those is IUC Thurmount, they are hemp dryers. And they're from Chicago area and Washington state. And they are also considering sponsoring our advertising fees.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Susan?
Yes.
Is there still someone coming with hemp beer?
There is one applicant that is interested. They're possibly going to work with Floyd's of Fleafville. They just opened up a business in Lancaster City on Prince Street. It's Allentown Brewery, I think. And so they're interested. I haven't received that application from them yet.
So as far as borough, are there any approvals we need to do that?
That would be individual.
Yeah, just talking to Evan about that, too. We got to look at the, every, backing up, every special event organization or ordinance that I've worked on in the past, you literally have to go through the code and look for any sections of the code that would need relief to allow these events, because these are atypical events for the average use of these facilities. And if we are going to be allowing alcohol to be served and consumed on-site, and that on-site includes a public right-of-way, then we get, we have to make sure that we are temporarily waiving our open container laws and defining a space. And if they are serving alcohol, they have all the proper licenses to do so. It's all doable, we just got to make sure we have all the paperwork done and everything in line to do these things, so.
Well, my understanding is that they're just, people are just going to be able to sample this? They're not going to sit down with their beer, right?
Sample still counts as an open container, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because they probably won't be selling it, which, that makes the PLCB regulations a little bit less onerous, but, yeah, you still have open container issues if it's in a public right-of-way or area.
And we've talked about possibly with the event application being modified, adding that to it and rewriting. So Susan, I would suggest if they do express interest, you'd have to come back with us on that one, and by that one, hopefully, we'll have something to go on that one. But that's going to be special.
Anyone else?
Well, I'm going to say we're really excited about this event. As you know, it was, the schedule is supposed to happen this past May. And Susan's done just an absolutely wonderful job pulling this together. Lots of contacts, and I think it's going to be great.
Awesome.
All right, anything else? All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by Councilperson Williams to approve the facility use request for the hemp fair for May 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Next, could I have a motion to consider resolution 20-23, authorizing an application to the Pennsylvania Municipal Assistance Program? And a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Bredard and a second by Councilperson Wunder to consider resolution 20-23, authorizing an application to the Pennsylvania Municipal Assistance Program. This is needed for us to apply for the grant for the body cams for the police.
Since the chief isn't here, Mayor, would you be able to answer maybe a question?
I would try.
In this, it says that the grant, if awarded, would cover a required match. So the possibility is that we might not even have to pay the match right-of-way, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought he said before, but.
So it's a federal grant, and we're going to match that with the DCED grant, which you can do, what you can't do is match a state grant with a state grant.
Okay.
Questions, comments, concerns? I have a motion by Councilperson Bredard and a second by Councilperson Wunder to approve resolution 20-23, authorizing an application to the Pennsylvania Municipal Assistance Program. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Next, we have some payments for the market house. Could I have a motion to approve application for payment number seven to East Coast Contracting in the amount of $159,837.50? And a second. I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve application for payment number seven to East Coast Contracting, Inc. in the amount of $159,837.50. Questions, comments, concerns? All right. I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve application for payment number seven to East Coast Contracting, Inc. in the amount of $159,837.50. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to approve application for payment number seven to Freddie Mechanical LLC in the amount of $38,340?
Seven.
And a second. Motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve application of payment number seven to Freddie Mechanical LLC in the amount of $38,340. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Wait, you're in favor, right? Little lagger. Next, could I have a motion to approve application of payment number five to Triangle Fire Protection, Inc. in the amount of $18,000?
Seven.
I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald, second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve application of payment number five to Triangle Fire Protection, Inc. in the amount of $18,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to approve application of payment number nine to Shannon A. Smith, Inc. in the amount of $9,632.50? I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald, a second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve application of payment number nine to Shannon A. Smith, Inc. in the amount of $9,632.50. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to approve application of payment number four revised to Triangle Fire Protection, Inc. in the amount of $18,000?
Seven.
I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald, a second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve application of payment number four revised to Triangle Fire Protection, Inc. in the amount of $18,000. All in favor?
Could I ask a question on that, Madam President?
Yep.
Just to be, just to be certain. Previously, council approved payment number five. Now you're approving payment number four with, it's a revised payment, and they're both for $18,000. So this is $36,000, Carl? Okay, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a, because the numbers are the same, that there wasn't something wrong. Thank you.
No problem. We have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve application of payment number four revised to Triangle Fire Protection, Inc. in the amount of $18,000. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excuse me, anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to consider the application for demolition at 249 North Third Street?
Seven.
And a second. I have a motion by Councilperson Wunder and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to consider the application for demolition at 249 North Third Street. As you may remember, we reviewed this at the HARP meeting, and per the code, the borough code, it says that any demolitions need to come before council for final approval. Since this property was in the historic district, that's why it went before HARP, because any demolition in the historic district, regardless if it can be seen by the street or not, from the street or not, needs to go to HARP. So it went to HARP, HARP approved it. We now need to approve the demolition for them to get started. And if you recall, it's dilapidated three-quarters shed, block shed. That is a hazard at this point that needs to come down. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns on that? All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Wunder and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve the application for demolition at 249 North Third Street. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, we're in the fun stuff. Next, presentation and acceptance of reports. Meeting development.
No report.
No report. All right. Finance.
Like I said, non-aging finance report for October 2020. Colin, do you have anything to?
I don't have the report itself, I just want to point out supplemental reporting that was requested by resident. In fact, we're listing example parcel listing as well as contributions in lieu of taxes reported as well. Anybody has any questions?
I don't. When we talked at the last meeting a little bit about that parking lot where they bagged the meters, and you said it was a lease agreement with CHI or something?
Yeah.
Would that be revenue for the borough, then? Where would, where would we find that in?
It is in the lease.
Is there a line item or something?
There is.
I mean, how do we know, like, how much we're getting from that?
It's in there with a KT grant as well. So if you want to break down that, I can provide that. You're not going to see it in that line item, of course, to catch all for all that, all those lease payments.
And how, how long have we been doing that?
Ooh, that was before my time.
Yeah.
When did CenturyLink get there? Or was it CenturyLink, it was a gas company, I believe, before that?
But the meters have not always been bagged, that's new.
That is correct.
We established a lease a while ago, there was this confusion as to whether people could or could not park there. So that's why we bagged the meters, to make it clear that it's permit parking only. So it has created some confusion with some of the residents, and it creates confusion with the parking enforcement side as to whether they should be going in there, citing people parking under expired meters, et cetera. So we're trying to clean up that process.
But I meant, like, how long has the agreement with CHI for that lot been in existence?
I'll have to look that up.
Agreement with CenturyLink, we leased this box to CHI. The agreement with CenturyLink, and that would have been before, like, 2016, '17?
I think so, yeah.
No, that lease happened back, only died around 2010.
That, really?
Yeah, and that was with either Mark or whoever it was before them. The borough leased that, is leasing that, and from the day we leased that, we put meters in there, and folks were allowed to rent, I use the word rent, were leased one of those parking spaces by the month. And there were one or two, wasn't many. But the other ones were metered and slug, and our parking enforcement folks patrolled that. Just recently, I'll say within the past year, CHI came in and leased the whole thing.
But I guess some mixed up, we don't actually own the lot as a borough, then?
No, we do not own, right now, it's CenturyLink.
So then, are we subleasing it?
Yes, correct. We pay them for the amount for the lots. We also, part of the agreement was we pay 50% of the property tax, which comes out at about $207. And then we turn around and resell their spots out. So when I looked at it last year, when I took it over to the finance department, it nets us about $2,300 of revenue.
We tried to buy it, they would not sell it because of the switch building down there. But they did finally agree to lease it to us.
Okay, well, thanks for explaining that, because I always thought it was borough owned, I didn't realize we were leasing it. Thank you.
I have one question, Colin.
Sure.
On all these market house payments. Do you have, are we in line with what we should be with all these matters?
I mean, we're on track as far as the committed amount, what council has approved as spend. We, of course, haven't gone over that amount. So if it wraps up over the next month and a half, you know, we're definitely not going to go over that amount. That's what we have an eye on. The budgeted amounts with COVID, as we talked about before, that is over $100 in line item. Sort of, you know, throwing it into a budget change for 2020, you know, we're still maintaining that approved amount.
But you don't have anything, it's, that's separate that we haven't seen here, right?
Are you looking on the?
The project sheets.
Yeah, the project sheets. Is that what you have, a project sheet, or? No, we just have it reported. Yeah, I can show you a project sheet I put together, and that shows what council approved, when, change orders. So we get that net committed balance, that net approved amount. So that's what we have an eye on. You know, and even if it takes, a certain project takes multiple years, depending on how the budget's laid out and how actuals come in, the budget may be a little bit skewed, but what really matters, again, is that project sheet, the total net committed amount from council, and that's what we look at consequently. And RAC2 as well, we look at that very closely. And RACB as well, we look at that very closely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, going forward, if you guys have any questions, I don't even want to see them. This is one of the things that Kyle has done new this year that has been a huge help. Is, we call them our project tracking sheets. It literally goes through each project and looks at it and breaks it down into minutia detail of what's been budgeted, what's been spent so far. We track every change order in there, whether it's negative or positive, keep the bottom line running. So, this is what I think has been needed here for a while is that truly have good, clean accounting for every project we do. So, it's not just for the market house. We're doing it for every project, I'll say that's over ten thousand now.
Yes.
So, every project that's coming forward now that's over ten thousand dollars, we track it through these tracking sheets. If you guys want to see them, you're welcome to. But they're just extremely helpful to pull them up and look at and see what's going on.
I think the one thing that struck me is the amount of lean recovery that we've had this year. I'm sure the majority of that is due to people selling their homes and the leans being satisfied at the?
At sale, yeah.
At the sale, but I mean, still, that's still a huge amount of, of home sales that are satisfying those needs. Does anyone else have any other questions, comments, or concerns on the financial reports? Legislation, I have nothing. Parks and Recreation, Councilperson Williams.
Thank you. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, the gingerbread house display that was scheduled for December fifth at Market House has been, the location's been changed to the borough building. We will decline the display windows in terms of the building. Just not sure whether or not the market will be open at that time. So, Fran, did you, have we decided on the time for bringing the gingerbread?
No, I'd like to get together with someone, Teresa perhaps, as far as maybe bringing them in on Friday and then working with them.
Yeah, I will, I'll email her tomorrow and get that information. And, yeah, I hope everybody finds out, finds out the new location. And it's going to come and see it, it's going to be really great on its creativity. Thank you.
Just a clear note, that is considered food. And because it is food, I am not responsible for pieces being missing off the houses. Just putting it out there now.
I don't know if you want to hang up the kitchen.
I will be in my office, I mean, it won't be in my office, no. Wouldn't be there.
All right. Personnel. I should have asked, I would have thought we would have had this with the rest of the motions.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Probably should have questioned that.
We should have moved that.
That's all right. Go ahead and read it.
Do I have a, consider a motion to hire Sharon Sino as planning and zoning manager with the salary of sixty-five thousand and a start date of December seventh, twenty twenty?
Oh, I thought you were going to motion it and someone else to see it, second. Okay. We have a motion by Councilperson Linder and a second by Councilperson Kaufman, to approve the motion to hire Sharon Sino as planning and zoning manager with a salary of sixty-five thousand dollars, start date of December seventh, twenty twenty.
So, I just want to say that we are just very excited to have Sharon come and join us. She comes with a wealth of experience and knowledge in, in a lot of areas. She was previously working down in South Florida, has done work with developers on, on bringing in creative new zoning districts. She has experience in comprehensive planning and code writing and administering and managing land development codes and zoning. So, she's, I think she's going to be a great fit here. We're excited to get her here and get her on board.
I would like to just say that this is not a new position, so that's understood. This was advertised late last year and we've had applications that we reviewed and so forth, so.
Yeah, and honestly, when I got here, and actually during my interview process, Mayor, I think it was you that asked me about, you know, bringing somebody on as, as quickly as possible. And that was an initial goal, but with the COVID shutdown, we delayed everything. And honestly, looking at budget restrictions, we thought, look, let's get through a certain point and then we'll, we'll look at bringing people on. We started, Kyle, August, I think it was, August, we re-advertised again, did the interviews and, and went through that process. And Sharon being our first choice, she and her family are relocating here. So, we delayed her start date to the beginning of December to give them a chance to get up here into the area. So, yes, this is a current existing position on our, on our staffing tables, but just finally getting it filled.
And then Karen, who was acting?
Acting zoning.
As interim or, yeah, consultant.
She will no longer be in place, is that correct?
That's correct. We're going to, we're going to allow a short overlap to let her help transition Sharon in, help her understand how she's doing things and how she's operating. And then, I'll say our contract with her will be, will be terminated in a sense, but she works for Commonwealth Code. So, we maintain a, a business relationship with Commonwealth. They do our plan review and inspection services anyway. So, that was the extension of that contract.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else have questions, comments, concerns? All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Linder and a second by Councilperson Kaufman, to approve the motion to hire Sharon Sino as planning and zoning manager with a salary of sixty-five thousand dollars, start date of December seventh, twenty twenty. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, Sharon, if you're watching, welcome to Columbia. Next, Public Works Center Property, Councilperson Fitzgerald.
Thank you, and I will defer right to Mark for an update on the market house.
Sure. First, I want to just back up a step. Kyle and I had a interesting conversation today with Sandra Law of CS Davidson. Sandra has been helping us with our RACP information that we are getting in to get our money returned or reimbursed. One of the first questions I asked her was, is, does it take this long to get through this RACB process? And I don't know if it's any consolation or makes us feel any better, it made me feel better. The answer is sadly, yes. There is one project that she is working on. It's a hospital project which has been completed for three years and they're still working on getting their money in. So, these things are very complicated, they take a long time, they ask for a lot of information, they, they get very detailed in the information they want. So, there's a lot of back and forth information that, that's happening. One thing I do want to let you guys know that I, I did have to inform Evan of yesterday, and that is that, and I know we discussed this back in April or May, is the deed to this parcel. We have not been able to locate it. We have looked everywhere, we have not been able to locate it. So, I've authorized Evan to get in, to go ahead and start the process of creating a new deed. And Evan, if you could just kind of give us a synopsis of what that is?
So, we, after Mark reached out to me, we, we took a look to see if we could find the deed. We have somebody who does title searches for us over here in Lancaster County. They looked for it and were unable to find a deed. There, there's, you know, what they told me was it's possible that there is not a deed. Part of the problem here is that this, this parcel is both the borough building and the market house. Takes up essentially an entire borough block here. And so, you're bounded on four sides by a street, which makes it much, much more difficult to find the parent parcel that all of these, these ones came out of. Because, now, we're going to keep looking for sure, but if we are not able to do that, what we would have to do is, is a quiet title action to essentially claim this land as the boroughs. I don't think anyone is challenging that the borough owns these things, you know. But that, that could take some time for sure if we've got to do it. But, I mean, I think it's very important that you have a deed to this property. You know, that's, that's not something you want to be without, especially, you know, as you put, you know, more and more money into the improvements for, for these two buildings. So, we are working on that and we will continue to work on that. Hopefully, somewhere in, you know, in the, you know, the back end of the, the assessment office at eighteen fifty or eighteen seventy, that we can find a deed. But, you know, we looked and it was, quickly it was not available, so we will keep working on that. So, yeah.
Could I ask another question about the RACP money? I mean, we were awarded that, correct? So, can they pull that away from us at all?
I don't want to say they can't. I, I think it's highly unlikely that they will because it's already been earmarked specifically for this project. It's just because this comes out of the office of the budget instead of normally where we get grant money from, which is DCD or PennDOT or something else. And they have just very strict guidelines on this. And so, until we get everything in place and in line, they won't release the money. But in, in talking to our consultant through StanTech, it's not a concern over if we get the money. It's just getting everything in place so that we get the money returned to us. Because it has been earmarked and dedicated in the, in the state budget for this project.
Thank you.
I think the only way we could lose it is if we just suddenly decided that, you know, we're, we're going to not just do the market house, we're going to put a new roof on this building, we're going to add to it. And if we go outside the scope of what's been approved, we could be at risk. But as long as we stay in the scope that's been approved by this project, we're good. And no, we don't need a new roof here. Just an example.
Anything else, Councilperson Fitzgerald? All right, safety, Councilperson Ward.
Thank you, President Zink. I had asked Jay Barner, our emergency management coordinator, to send to provide us with a quick update and maybe some recommendations for the public as we move into the holiday season and kind of find indoors more and as we experience more of the uptick, as the mayor mentioned earlier, in COVID cases. And he was kind enough to put together actually a two-page report, he's calling it a press release, which the borough manager will make sure gets online on the borough website so you can have access to this. I would like just to read one paragraph of the introduction to the press release, just kind of provides a synopsis. Jay wanted to make sure that he understands the hardship that's, and the frustration, exhaustion that's been created this past year because of COVID nineteen. And he urges everyone to remain diligent in the fight to control the virus. We are now seeing levels of daily cases at the levels that they were in March, April of this year for COVID nineteen. Even though the vaccine is coming, it will be three to six plus months before the vaccine reaches everyone and have time to become effective. With the holidays approaching, it will be most difficult, it will be the most difficult time for everyone to adhere to the orders with the desire to celebrate with family and friends. See the press release and I would like to also just remind us all that, you know, if you are one of those folks that may be at high risk, I think it's all up to us to take personal responsibility for health, safety, and welfare. And if you do know folks that are at high risk, I think we also have a responsibility as human beings to the other person to be mindful of that and be considerate and protect yourself. Masks are appropriate, distancing is, social distancing is certainly appropriate. And enjoy the holidays. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, next, staff reports, comments, and announcements. Evan, you're up.
All right, obviously, we are working on finding that deed. We've got lots of other, you know, lots of other things going on. One thing that we are working on right now is getting together the yard waste agreements. Those are going to go out on time this year. Hopefully, we will get them out to all the participating municipalities in time for their December meetings. There are a few minor tweaks we want to make just to, just to clean up that contract a little bit, but nothing major, everything's going to largely stay the same there. So, but those, we're working on getting those out on time so that way, you know, it's not April again like it was last year. But, yeah, so we will. We will keep, we'll keep working on, on that and keep working through some things as they come up, so.
All right, Derek isn't here, so Mark.
So, the Public Works team has been working diligently to get the light posts decorated. The lights were secretly placed on a tree in an undisclosed location and around the borough, soon to be lit on an upcoming Saturday and celebrated. The, the lights here have been set up on, on Borough Hall. So, we, we are ready for the Saturday tree lighting ceremony and everything's in place and went really well. While we had the, the eighty-foot lift here, we did have the consultant, as we talked about, to come up here and go up in the lift here at Borough Hall and take some measurements regarding the, the clocks up in the tower. We are waiting to get back this final report from him and then I will be bringing forward to you some proposals on how to either fix or replace the mechanics inside the clock tower so that the clocks remain functional and we move forward with that. So, if you, if you drove by and saw them up here on the, that's what we were doing is we were just checking that and getting the final measurements to get all that put together and done. It's worked out nice because we were realizing that we would have to rent a lift to get him up there. And they were like, hey, wait a minute, we just did, it's here. So, we brought it down from Locust Street and, and got it all taken care of. So, that was, very glad that we get that in and done. I just want to start reminding everybody now, as wintertime is coming, our crews do the best they can to get out there and clean leaves away from storm inlets, et cetera. But if anyone, if you see them out in front of your house, just take, take a few minutes and, and clean them away and push them out to make sure the grates are open. Because in wintertime, if we get a heavy rain and a nighttime comes and there's, there's a backup in there on that outlet, we don't want any ice forming on the streets. And as we come into the wintertime, yes, want to let people know that we are working right now on a intermunicipal agreement that I, I'm honestly very excited about. And that is with the concern of COVID nineteen and crews working in tight spaces in these public works department, Lancaster Township reached out to everybody and said, hey, listen, we'd like to go into an intermunicipal agreement to say that if a township gets hit with COVID and they're down, public works crews, that the other municipalities around them would, would do the best that they can to send help and support so that none of us get stuck with crews being down and not being able to get our streets cleaned and sidewalks cleaned off. So, we are working right now on getting an agreement together so that this, at least through this winter, we can assure that ourselves and all of our neighbors around us all have coverage over the wintertime to get stuff done. I think everyone has the same concerns, like we like the idea, we want to make sure that there's, you know, we have adequate crews to take care of us and that we're not putting ourselves at risk. But I think if we all work together, I think we'll get through this winter just fine as a team. So, that's all I have for now, thank you.
And I did see there was a note here that you probably wanted to announce it, that the borough offices are closed Thursday, November twenty-sixth and Friday, November twenty-seventh.
Thank you, yes, Teresa put those on and I, I did not read it, so.
See?
She is sharp.
I got you.
Thank you.
All right. Boards, commissions, and committees. There are no upcoming meetings. Included in the packet are the approved meeting minutes for the civil service and the planning commission. For council comments, we'll just go this way this time.
Okay. Yes, I have one thing I want to bring up when we're discussing about the, with the codes and the changes being made. And like we said earlier, that I recommend that Councilman Kaufman and Councilman Bergard be on this committee and plus the borough manager. I think that's a great step. The other thing that. The other thing that Mark and I have talked about, and he said he, they did it down in Florida, and I've heard comments from other people, it's, it's just like a, a second step of having the, the fines from codes posted on the Borough Website, maybe like in a PDF file. And for the sake of transparency, because I've heard so many times saying this person's being picked on or that person's being picked on. Well, you know, we get a report of what code person does and how many code violations he reports. I think for transparency, I think a simple PDF file on air with the officer's name and maybe just the addresses. And try to alleviate this thing where I think somebody's getting picked on. You know, if you see five violations there and it's all the same same address, you should be able to see what all the violations were. And I don't see this any different than anything else being public. You and I have talked about this. I don't necessarily see you have to have a name, I would just say the, the code officer and the address of the violation. And I think that would be fantastic, transparent for this community and hopefully alleviate this thing that people are being picked on, like me. No.
I think you need to talk about that in a personality.
I couldn't hear you.
I said, I think you need to talk about that in a personality.
So what are you referring to is, Florida has very, very strict public record laws and open government laws. And so we simply had a portal on our website that people could go in and type in an address and see if they have applied for a building permit, if they received any code fines or violations or anything. Because we were getting the same accusations that, that we were targeting certain neighborhoods or looking at certain areas. And so once a month, I had to give a report to the City Council showing a map showing where all the code fines were issued and where they went because, just to eliminate that, that we were targeting neighborhoods or going after certain areas. And when people started seeing the maps over and over again, we realized that it's, it's spread out through the entire city. So I can talk with Evan about what is, is allowed and what is considered a public document in that and if it's available to the public as a public document, then I have no problem releasing that.
I could tell you in almost all of my municipalities, you get a report from the zoning officer and/or the code enforcement officer that shows that exactly what Howard was talking about at every meeting. That's not abnormal at all.
It's by address or something?
Yeah, yep, yep.
So and, and the other thing that, and the one thing that Howard and I talked about too is, is if people start realizing that, you know, my name's gonna be listed for not, not doing this, it's a deterrent from people saying, I'm just gonna skip it and I'll, I'll pay the $25 fine. It says, whoa, I don't, I don't want to be listed in a, in a public report that I did something. So it's, it can be also a way of motivating people to maintain their property.
You know, I thought I'd bring this up now since we, you know, approved all this kind of stuff. But we didn't really go in real depth on this. It was just, you know, like I brought it to you from people talking over the last two years that I've talked to. And even just two weeks ago, when I got my hair cut, I was brought up, you know, you know, this guy's getting picked on. I thought, well, you know, I'd have to see the report to tell you who's, who's being picked on. I mean, it's, it's right in the report. And I said, cause, take pictures. They take pictures almost every time they go out on violations and stuff. I said, so it's right there, you know, it's. Just try and alleviate one more little niche.
Well, and not only that, it alleviates the people that say, oh, so-and-so is getting away with this. You know, what they know realizes that maybe so-and-so was actually cited for it several times and that person decided just to keep paying the fines. You know, because there's that too.
And like we learned with the parking violation, sometimes perception isn't, isn't always accurate. And when we put the truth out there of what we're doing, that we're doing our jobs as consistently as we can, it helps eliminate that, so.
Yes.
So we'll look at, we'll look at what we can do and how to do it.
Yeah, because when we get Sharon in here, that's the other thing, is I would like to go back to getting a list, you know, monthly of the, the building permits in our packet. Even if it's just a list of, you know, the addresses and stuff, at least that way it's something.
Yeah. Absolutely.
All right. Okay. I was fortunate enough to be given a tour today up here at the Church of Forth and Locust. And I just wanted to mention that they're doing a fantastic job there, helping people who struggle in the community. Because I didn't even know what all they had there, I was amazed when I went through. They have a great big clothing bank and giving out food. And the pantry in the basement is just, I was just really surprised at what is in there. And I would just encourage people, especially elected officials, maybe even police, maybe not during the COVID, isn't the best time to encourage it. But if anyone is able to volunteer any kind of time to help at their homeless shelter and maybe serve food or even just go in and sit and talk to some of the people, I think it would be well received. I think it would mean a lot. I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Have you also used more volunteers in the clothing?
Oh, okay. It was amazing how, how much clothing they have and how well organized. Okay. It's very well organized though, and I thought, it's just fantastic what they're offering. Yeah. Yep, yep, that was just great, yeah. Thank you, Susan.
I have nothing.
I'd like to reiterate on Mark's point about Saturday's pre-living. Saturday is also a small business Saturday. So I encourage everybody to pay tribute to the local shops and give a little back. Take good stories.
Anything? Anything? Anything they have? All right. We've had our chance. The announcement of the next meeting at 7:00 PM on December 1st, 2020. Council will hold a work session. We are now going to adjourn to an executive session to discuss the purchase of McGinnis Airport property and an employment matter. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm on it.
And a second. All right, motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Linder to adjourn the meeting at 8:21 PM. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that's a wrap. Pam, you're staying on? Thanks.
I'll just, I'll just stay here.
Yep.